Okay, good morning, everyone. December the eighth and today is a work session for us. As we continue, excuse me, as we continue. Our work on the comprehensive rezoning, commercial, industrial and employment campus districts. So we trust everyone had a good, good evening last night. Got some very positive comments on our abbreviated and I guess you could call it a hybrid Christmas. Ringing in the holiday season. So appreciate all the, everybody showing up and appreciate staff that were there. So thank you to everybody and we'll, we'll hit on that more on our regular session on Thursday morning. But today is a continued work session and without further ado, to get through this. Linda, you were on here, I assume you still are. You disappeared from us. And there she is. I'm going to turn it immediately right over to you to get us started in this morning's work session.
All right. Well, good morning commissioners. Today is our first work session post the public hearing that was held on Thursday, December third, and we're going to review with you just where we've been with this whole process. And a game plan moving forward to help you make decisions on the comprehensive rezoning of these properties. So again, we're here to talk about the buyer request for the commercial, industrial and employment campus. So just going over a little bit of the process. Samir, if you can to the next slide, please.
I'm working on that. Hold on a second.
It's up. So we began this process in January of 2020 for the buyer request right after you adopted the commercial, industrial and employment campus text. And we accepted applications from interested property owners. So again, this wasn't us rezoning properties. It was us asking those who wanted to be in conformance with the master plan to submit application. Then, once we received all the applications in January and February, we closed that process. And in March through June of 2020, the planning department worked on detailed staff reports and also sent out the reports for agency comments. So we worked with our public works. We worked with EMS, our emergency services. We worked with our land and resource management to review those detailed staff reports which you have been given and you have in your binder of materials. In June, the staff reports and the staff recommendation was presented to the planning and zoning commission and posted on our carolrezoning.org website. That was a very lengthy process with the planning commission. We had several work sessions through the months of July through October. As you can see from the slide, we had in total seven. Commissioner Rossing was very integral in those meetings as we went through all of the now 28 properties. We had several properties drop out throughout the process. We've mailed letters to adjoining property owners and other interested parties to make them aware of the possible changes in their community for the rezoning, as well as we ended up posting the properties about 30 days ahead of the public hearing. In early October, those recommendations, as you all are aware, were forwarded to you, the Board of County Commissioners then for your review. And the first thing that we started with the board was October 29th, having a listening session. And that was for you to get the initial comments from the community. So this was not necessarily a public hearing, but it was very much like a public hearing type format. Then we held three work sessions where you all, we went through each property and its staff report in detail. And this culminated with the final public hearing on December 3rd, which you all just had on Thursday. And now the public record is closed. So we are accepting no, we're not accepting comments any longer on this buyer request. So if we can go to the next slide. So today, what we're going to talk about was obviously this process. And then I have Jim Aman, who is our new Assistant County Attorney, to talk about two cases that have come up in Maryland in Calvert and Queen Anne's County to discuss legal precedents within comprehensive rezonings and comprehensive plans. Just to make you aware, some of it's relevant to what we're talking about. I just think you'll find it insightful as you make your decisions. We'll review again, what is spot zoning? We had a lot of comments and questions come up that the community, as they made comments, said that this was a zoning map amendment and that change or mistake needed to be proven. And that's not the case. We're doing a comprehensive rezoning. And also there was some discussion about spot zoning. So I just want to make again clear what those two things are and what we're doing here and how this process is completely different. Again, talk about non-conforming uses. Then what we have done is gone through the list of those 28 properties. And I want to share 11 properties with you today for you all to have further discussion. And what I'm trying to do is break it down for you on properties that it might be an easier decision for you all to make on how to move forward, their properties that were consistent with the plan, had a favorable planning commission recommendation, and we received either only positive comments or no comments at all. So I feel these would be good warm uppers for you all to have a discussion on. And then we'll talk about the next steps to get through the remaining properties and future work sessions we have scheduled with you all to move forward. So with that, I'm going to go to the next slide and have Jim just discuss with you the two most recent cases in Queen Anne's County, where the rezoning requests were not consistent with the comprehensive plan and there was a challenge. As well as Calvert County, their comprehensive plan was being challenged. But the challenge did not deal with the consistency requirements in the land use article, but there were some ethical and notice concerns. Again, nothing really pertains to us specifically, but these will help you in you making your future decisions. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jim just to give you a quick briefing on these two most recent cases, I mean literally recent in the last few months cases. So Jim?
Yes, thank you, Linda, and good morning, Commissioner. So as Linda said, she asked me to look into these cases just for your benefit, and it's just something I think is important to be mindful of. So I'll just get right into the the Queen Anne's County case because that is kind of the more substantive case. So that case, it actually comes out of the 2010 Queen Anne's County Comprehensive Plan. And in a very similar process to this, the county, Queen Anne's County adopted a comprehensive zoning ordinance. And the ordinance covered 11 properties. And the planning commission recommended against rezoning of four of the 11 properties as contrary to the master plan. Essentially, the planning commission thought that these properties, which were in rural and permanently preserved land, which is very similar to our conservation and ag districts, were being rezoned to, proposed to be rezoned to higher densities. And they saw that as contrary to the, to the comprehensive plan. So they recommended against it. Nevertheless, the Queen Anne County Board of Commissioners voted by a three to two vote to approve them. And so the four properties go like this, and it's just a little important to understand this. So one was a 216 acre property rezoned from agriculture to light industrial highway. Again, our agriculture code and their agriculture code are very similar. The second property was an 80 acre property that was rezoned from countryside, which is similar to our conservation district, to neighborhood village center, which in Queen Anne's County is sort of like a mixed use. It would best be comparable, I think, to our lower medium commercial districts. And then there was a third property, where 31 acres of a 173 acre property was rezoned from agriculture to suburban commercial. And the remaining 142 acres were rezoned to suburban estate, which is comparable to our residential 40,000 or 20,000 districts. And then the final fourth property was rezoned from agriculture to suburban commercial. So after the Florida County Commissioners voted to approve these rezonings, four environmental groups and 14 residents filed suit claiming that the four properties were inconsistent with the county's comprehensive plan and sought a declaratory judgment, which is essentially a ruling from the court that the Board of County Commissioners acted beyond its authority and that the rezonings were inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Now, I want to stress that this case did not go to trial. And the decision of the court was on complete procedural grounds, which is important to keep in mind. So there were no facts in dispute because the Commissioners passed an ordinance. So the plaintiff sought what is known as summary judgment. And that's basically an argument that there are no, there are not enough facts to create a genuine dispute and that the court should just make a decision based on the law, which the plaintiffs were arguing just based on the land use article and the county's comprehensive plan. What the Board of Commissioners did was inconsistent. The Board of Commissioners moved to dismiss and in the alternative summary judgment, arguing that it had wide discretion in the Legislative Act of rezoning. So it's important to keep that in mind. So the two issues they just, the court looked at when deciding on those procedural grounds was whether the Board of Commissioners acted within their legal boundaries as to the rezoning of the 260 or 216 acre, I'm sorry, property from agriculture to light industrial highway. And that had less to do with consistency from the master plan to sort of a quirk with Queen Anne's County. In Queen Anne's County, there is zoning along key intersections of 301. And that, that what is allowed in those zones is very specific. And based on the county code, you cannot go out of the uses that are allowed in that zone. And the Commissioners voted to do so. And the court said that in doing that, they acted beyond their authority. And this was just purely something very specific to a very specific zone in Queen Anne's County. The other three rezonings that the Board of County Commissioners approved, however, had to do with consistency, which is more important for, for us here. So moving on to that, the second, the court argued that, or the court held basically that the rezoning of the three properties from agriculture to conservation to higher densities was not consistent with the master plan, which created a kind of dispute of facts, which would lead to trial. The Board of County Commissioners ultimately got out of this case, but the court held that that there was a genuine dispute of fact. And basically what the court was saying was that here, that the action was comprehensive, but the court was concerned that these particular actions kind of smelled of spot zoning, had the appearance of spot zoning rather than a comprehensive rezoning process. And for a rezoning process to pass muster, it must be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which means that the ordinance will quote, "further and not be contrary to seven criteria enumerated in the land use article," which is the consistency requirements. And those, those factors include, and I'll just read the entire section is that to have consistency with a comprehensive plan, the term shall mean an action that will further and not be contrary to the following items in the plan. Policies, timing of implementation of the plan, timing of development, timing of rezoning, development patterns, land uses and densities and intensities. So the court concluded based on this reasoning that the Board of County Commissioners did not adequately demonstrate or set forth enough facts in their findings to show that they actually addressed the consistency requirements of the land use article. So and just to back up here, there's another interesting quirk in the Queen Anne's County Code that, that the Board of Commissioners was arguing that as actions by being comprehensive were not required to follow this provision that applied only to map amendments and required the Board of Commissioners to make determinations based on specific facts contained in the record that a substantial change had occurred in the character of the neighborhood where the property is located or a mistake in the existing zoning classification had occurred. The Board of Commissioners argued that comprehensive zoning, on the other hand, did not require the, to have such findings, provided that the map amendments were consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan. The court disagreed and said that the, that the Board of Commissioners had to demonstrate in some way and set forth facts to show that they addressed the consistency requirements of the land use article. So as for what this means for Carroll County, basically is that there's no similar provision in our county code requiring the Commissioners to find any findings or adequately address the consistency requirements. It would be a good idea, but it's not required when considering the adopting rezoning. Therefore, the County Commissioners may choose to go against any recommendations from the Planning Commission, but they can only do so as long as the action is consistent or has consistency with the comprehensive plan, which is to say it's not contrary to the comprehensive plan. For example, like a rezoning in an ag district that would allow, you know, high-rise buildings or something along something along those lines. So as I said, the Board of County Commissioners in Queen Anne's County kind of dropped the case because they thought that expending further dollars and legal effort to, what they, to uphold earlier rezoning on four farm properties from agriculture to commercial residential were not warranted. So that's basically what the Queen Anne's County Code was about, that the Commissioners are required to to stay consistent with the comprehensive plan and they can't go outside or do anything contrary to that consistency within the comprehensive plan. And that they should be able to show, adequately show some facts proving that their zoning decisions, their rezoning decisions are consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then as Linda mentioned, there were two cases in Calvert County that don't deal with the comprehensive plan being challenged on consistency grounds, but are nevertheless important because they deal with ethical and notice issues. So one of the cases dealt with the issue of a member of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners voted to approve the county's comprehensive plan. And it was alleged that he had a conflict of interest because that Commissioner allegedly owned land or had some sort of interest in land that was being affected by the comprehensive plan. The plaintiff sued the County Commissioners and sought a declaratory judgment to set the entire comprehensive plan aside. They were arguing essentially that the Calvert County Commissioners have what amounts to a line item veto. And they should have removed the relevant properties that they thought there was an alleged conflict of interest in. The Calvert County Court disagreed and dismissed the case as basically having no merit. That they couldn't find any conflict of interest and that it being a comprehensive plan, it covered the entire county, not just one sort of specific property. The second case in Calvert County dealt with the issue of town center plans in Calvert County, which is sort of specific to that county. The Calvert County Comprehensive Plan Enacting Ordinance provided that a comprehensive plan superseded the county's town center plans. And plaintiffs filed a preliminary injunction against the implementation of the larger comprehensive plan on the basis that it was illegally enacted due to issues of notice. Now, this case has not yet been tried in front of a judge on any substantive or procedural grounds, however, with conversations with the Calvert County Attorney's Office. They're not concerned at all with this case and expect it to be dismissed as was the, the other case with Calvert County. So I think the, the big takeaways for the members, the Commissioners is that basically when considering the rezoning and all the properties that you will be considering in the future, just to keep in mind that it, that those rezonings have to be consistent with, with the county's comprehensive plan. And if the rezonings are not consistent with the comprehensive plan, it opens up the county to sort of litigation exposure, which we want to avoid not owning. uh sort of litigation exposure, which we want to avoid not only and more importantly though, um you want the comprehensive plan um to show, you know, a strong thoughtful, well-thought-out um zoning throughout the county. So um that's why the courts and the state law really pounds um on the importance of um consistency and Linda and I and um Mr. Burke just wanted uh the Commissioners just to be aware of that um as we move into the next process um or the next step in this process. Um, and with that, I'm finished and I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Mr. Allman, thank you very much for that presentation. It's what I was looking for. So basically you're telling us that all the non-conforming properties out there right now have no legal chance of getting through court to be changed, to be conforming?
Right, well, a non-conforming, that's different. So non-conforming, as long as it's a legal use, they'll be, those properties will be okay. Um, the issue um that the court confronted in the Carroll County case was there were properties that were um in the comprehensive plan zone for ag and um permanently preserved areas. And the county Commissioners uh voted to rezone those in higher densities that went against um that kind of sort of agriculture and land preservation objective in the um comprehensive plan. So, and basically found that that wasn't consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that's what the court addressed that uh in Queen Anne's County, they didn't um directly address the issue of non-conforming uses. Um, and as long as a non-conforming use is um legal um and um meets the requirements of our county code, then um it's fine moving forward past this um our uh rezoning.
Has your legal department gone through all these proposed amendments or rezoning proposals? And like blacklisted a potential that we lose on these properties? I mean, I'd like to know going into these votes, which ones have precedents to be overturned? Because I don't want us to be jammed up in legal cases where we're definitely gonna lose. I'm all about case law and precedence. And if there's precedence out there for all these decisions we make to get kicked out, I don't want to waste our time going down that road, wasting the county's money on this. We should know ahead of time going into this by our legal department, which cases would fail if we approved them, and I'd love to see that list.
I, we will work on that and um and um get that to you um as soon as possible and before uh you make any decisions on um the rezoning. But again, I think it's just important that um for the Commissioners just to understand that um you have a lot of deference with the courts. The courts don't want to do zoning. They leave that to the local government, specifically the local legislative bodies. So the court
And I think, well, I, if, if I can step in here, I think we'll stop it there. Uh, I think we're going down a path here that we don't need to go down at this point. Uh, uh, and I, I would like to leave the, the, the legal, the legal opinion and language just here and, and move forward with our process. Uh, as far as we're all concerned, uh and we've done this uh better than anybody and we, we've, we've vetted this to the nth degree. So we appreciate the opinion, uh but I think we need to just, we, we need to just stop there. And if there are specific questions, we can get into that uh on a more personal level moving forward, if, if that's okay with everyone. And I do appreciate your, your looking into those, Jim. Thank you very much. And um I'd like to just move forward now if we can. So Linda, can we turn it over to you?
Absolutely, Jim. Thank you so much. Again, we just wanted to put in context, um, you know, as we move forward. So again, just to reiterate what a zoning map amendment is, or you've also heard it referred to as a piecemeal rezoning. This is much different than the comprehensive planning process. This is when a property owner or contract purchaser is requesting a change in the zoning based on either the finding of change in the character of the community unforeseen by the plan or a mistake in the original zoning. You've seen these come before you in the past. We haven't had one in quite some time. Um, but these are much different than a comprehensive rezoning effort. I know we've heard that discussed. Sometimes you haven't seen enough evidence demonstrated where there was a change in the area. That's not necessarily the case needed because we were doing plan implementation with the comprehensive rezoning. So the petitioner or requester does not need to demonstrate or prove change or mistake in any of the cases that you have before you. If you can go to the next slide, please. And again, spot zoning, you heard Jim mention, um and this is a legal term and spot zoning is not allowed in the state of Maryland. It is the process of singling out a specific piece of land for a zoning classification different from the surrounding community that's not consistent with the plan and that truly is for the benefit or the detriment of the property owner specifically. So for instance, if we had a piece of property, they're coming through, they just want to be requested because they want to improve the value of their land, let's just say. And you were to rezone that property, it could be challenged as a spot zoning, especially if it's something that is not consistent with the plan um moving forward. So again, it is really, as the slide says, the antithesis of planning um and zoning. When considering a spot zoning, the courts will generally determine whether the zoning relates to the compatibility of the zoning and the surrounding uses. So again, something to be aware of, um, you know, some of the properties, because of how we moved forward with the comprehensive rezoning, we allowed properties to come forward that were not necessarily a hundred percent consistent with the plan and consistency was determined by the Planning Commission and the recommendations moving them forward to. So we do have some properties that, you know, could fall into that area. If you can go to the next slide, please. And then finally, we've heard a lot of non-conforming uses. So basically, a non-conforming use is a legal use. Carroll County has a very permissive um non-conforming use code. As you recall, when we were working on the Commercial Industrial and Employment Campus, um you, the Board of County Commissioners, actually even extended the length of time that a non-conforming use can remain inactive from two to three years now. So we have a very long period where something can remain inactive as a non-conforming use and still remain, retain their non-conforming use standard. So basically, just to reiterate, these are legal uses prior to the regulations of zoning in Carroll County. Many of the properties that you see that have come before you through this process are legal non-conforming uses. This zoning would not, i- it, it would rezone these properties, but not rezoning them is not to their detriment. They are still allowed to be operating in the manner in which they're operating in currently. Um, so I don't want to go over the whole slide with you, but you can see, you know, these are exactly what the non-conforming uses are, that they can continue indefinitely and does not, as long as they don't cease operation for twenty-four months with a possible twelve-month extension. Again, that was added to the code last year. Um, and unlike some jurisdictions, non-conforming uses may be transferred to another property owner. So it travels with the property, not the owner of the business, not the property owner. Um, and the historic use of the property, which you'll hear um throughout some of the discussion from
And Linda, I, I apologize. Say that last comment again about the non-conforming use travels with
The property, with the property, not the property owner or the business itself. So if the property has a non-conforming use and then they sell and then someone else purchases it and they went to open up that same business or a similar business, they can do that. That non-conforming use sticks with the property.
That, that's correct. I just, the first time, it just wasn't very clear, but good deal. Thanks.
Yeah. Um, and again, you know, historic use of the property is not a planning concept. So just because something is a non-conforming use and has been, let's say, an industrial type of business since nineteen sixty-five, does not necessarily mean it should convert over to industrial zoning, depending on where it's located. That's why we have the planning process, which contemplates that as we review our plans with the Planning Commission and then the Board of County Commissioners adopts these plans, we are looking at all of those properties in that comprehensive fashion. So identifying them at that time, whether they should be converted or not to an industrial or commercial or some other type of use would have happened during that comprehensive planning process. So again, just going back and saying, well, it's always been this way, does not necessarily make it so that you have to feel compelled to rezone that property in accordance with its use. If you can go to the next slide, please. So again, a key point which Jim has said and, you know, various case law and Maryland law, just again, keep in mind as we review this, rezoning should be consistent with the policies and land use designations sent out in the comprehensive plan. The properties that we forwarded to you um within the staff reports, we say whether or not it's consistent with the plan and then how Planning Commission found its findings of consistency to help you through this process. So just keep that in mind. And again, I think as Jim had said, you know, if there's something that you feel maybe the Planning Commission missed and you feel it is consistent with the plan, we will have those discussions and, and make those consistency judgments um as you move forward in this process. Next slide, please.
So a, a question on that process, Linda. Uh, I, I, I am here to assume that planning and zoning would always, would, would already have, have made the, the uh, that decision that it was consistent. Isn't that their job? That's not our job.
Well, of course, they have done that, but maybe there's something you feel might be a little bit different and you see it with a different eye as far as consistency goes. But yes, they have done that and forwarded that to you.
Okay, I, I Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I, I understand that, but I don't want to get into uh, you know, whose opinion is right when it comes to consistency with the master plan. That's not what we're here to do. We, 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 we put that board in place and it's been in place for years to make that decision before it gets to our level. Or am I wrong about that? Ed, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but
No, no, it, it's actually, it's a, it's a perfect segue into a couple of comments I wanted to make before, and this is perfect timing. Um, first off, the planning uh team under Linda and then also the Planning Commission did just an outstanding uh job in getting us to where we are today. The seven work sessions from a Planning Commission, they were focused on the recommendations were not to be political whatsoever. They were, they were to be objective using the uh master plan and the comprehensive rezoning plans that we have in place. They were also focused to be on county-wide development. And the key word also we've heard a lot was consistency. So they were looking, they being a planning uh commission, were looking at all the maps, looking at the infrastructure in place and was it consistent at this time today uh for it to be rezoned, yes or no? Now, we have a much wider uh level of discretion in making the decisions. We do have the ability to be subjective in uh making our decisions moving forward. Um, the interpretations that the Planning Division and the Planning Commission or Directorate and the Planning Commission sometimes didn't see eye to eye because they were uh doing their own analysis and determined that it was either non-consistent or consistent. So that's why there are a few that there was conflict between the two. Um, now, we're not here to mediate between those two. We're here to make decisions at the end of the day uh with all of that information. Um, but I was, I was very impressed, especially the last work session we had with the Planning Commission. A few comments that came out from Dan and Cynthia were um there, the importance of not being political, the importance of the commission being there and looking at it very objective uh in the pieces of property. We may not see it that way, and that's where we're gonna have these discussions. Um, and that's why I've always said, you know, just because you can doesn't mean you should. Is the timing appropriate for the rezoning or for, you know, whatever we may decide? Those are all pieces that were gonna come into play. But you're, you're absolutely right, Steve, and I apologize being long-winded, but you're absolutely right that the Planning Commission and the, and our county government has already looked at the master plan, the comprehensive plans, and have made determinations on whether they are consistent, non-consistent, and recommendations are moving forward with uh approval or non-approval to us. So I, I hope that kind of clears up a little bit for you.
Yeah, it, it does, Ed, and I appreciate that. And uh with all due respect to the, to the legal advice too, and I appreciate, you know, Jim looking into those two cases, but that, let's be clear here, uh those two counties uh uh, okay, with all due respect, let me point that out again, did their process all wrong. And their, the, the, the transparency and all of the things that they did leading up to their uh decisions were, for the most part, wrong and, and inconsistent with their process. So I, I think that needs to be pointed out to, here too. Uh, we're, I, 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 I would, I, I would love to, to find a county and this is out of respect for our planning department and our planning and zoning. I would, I, I think you'd be hard pressed to find a county that has had the amount of work sessions and the amount of, of, of review and everything that we've done here. I, I want to make that very clear here because I want to get, we're, we're starting down a rabbit hole here and I don't want to get down in that rabbit hole. So I, I think that needs to be made clear here. We've done it unlike anyone else and I, I that, that, I just want to tap that on to what Ed's comments were here, so that there's no confusion here. Um, we kind of, with all due respect, I think we kind of set the stage just a tad bit mistaken this morning. So I, I want those facts to come out. Thanks.
So what I have before you is a property list of the first nine properties um for your review. I selected these properties based on that they have a favorable staff recommendation, a favorable Planning Commission recommendation, are consistent with the plan for the area. And just to clarify, consistency was determined in two ways by Planning Commission and staff. Did it meet the goals and objectives of the plan for the area? And/or is it consistent with the land use designation as determined um in the various plans? And the reason I say that is, is because some of the requests were not necessarily a one-for-one with the land use designation, but it really did meet the goals and objectives for, to further the comprehensive plan and area in which that particular property lies. So those were the, the main driving factors um in the compilation of this list. Also that there were no controversial comments for these requests. So these were some of the ones that really um, you know, for your consideration, maybe some of the easier discussions that you have as we move through this process. So just to go over again what these properties are. The first property was I two, one, four, twenty, twenty, oh, oh, three. This applicant was Michael Weddiken and the request was add to I two. This was designated in the twenty fourteen Carroll County Comprehensive Plan. Um, and it matches with the remaining I two in that particular corridor. Um, it is five point five acres and both staff and Planning Commission gave this a favorable recommendation. Again, all of this information you do have in your booklets as well as this presentation that I forwarded to you as well.
Okay, so as a matter of, of uh process here, I, I need to stop and ask if, if, what, what's your intent here? Because we've been over these properties like how many times now?
Absolutely.
Is your intent for us now to just make a decision on these eleven? Or, and, and if that is the case, are my colleagues ready to make the decision on these eleven properties? Uh, is, is there any need to go over any of the comments that were made or comments that were not made or we didn't hear before we get into it? I just don't, I, I don't want to get ahead here because we really haven't made a decision on how we're gonna move forward. So I, I just, I'm not sure what the intent is here, is are we ready to vote on these or what? I'm, I'm a little bit, I, I want to hear from everybody first before we jump.
Well, all right, since I led up first, I'll, I'll speak first on that one. Um, I, I, I think it would be beneficial if we went through these properties that are listed one at a time and we took kind of a straw poll or what we think about whether we should approve or not approve. If we're all in agreement Whether we should approve or not approve. If we're all in agreement, then it's a no-brainer. We can move ahead. If we're not, then either we stop for today and discuss the properties that we're not in agreement on, or we decide to, to look at them again later. But I think if, you know, taking a straw poll upfront, I think would be. Help quicken the process, basically. We, we've all done our due diligence and looked at this, looked at the comments and so forth. For all agreement on it, then we've got it. We can move on to the next property. For not, discuss it now or discuss it later. That's up to, you know, you guys, how you want to do that one.
So Dennis, are you saying start from the very beginning, not the list that Linda's talking about? Or what?
No, we can start, we can take the list Linda has. I mean, that's, that's what was prepared for today and according to her, it's the easy ones. With easy and we can work our way to more difficult ones.
Root, but I'd like to hear real quickly from legal counsel whether this is acceptable, that we're not in violation of any of the processes.
I think we've already heard, Eric, we're, we're not. That, that's, that's why I wanted to just, I wanted to be clear about what we heard this morning in that briefing. We, we are not. In any, there, there's no, there's, we have, there's no violation here at all. I, I just. None.
I understand that by me as far as directly what Commissioner Fraser just suggested specifically. Like going through a, a vote on somebody's today. Is that acceptable or would be in, we be in advance of public hearings? I just want to make sure this procedure is acceptable.
Listen, I, I can't be any more clear enough on our process. Again, we, we've done it unlike anyone else. Are you suggesting we have another public hearing? Or, or I, I'm not, I'm unclear here because we, we've, we've done this at nauseam.
I, I'm not, I'm just stating, I'd like to move forward. I just want to make sure we got the blessing and then move forward.
I think we're blessed.
So if I can make a suggestion, this is what Planning Commission did. I think it worked very well and I think could work well for your commission, your board. Is do a provisional vote or provisional decision. And what we will do in open session, when you're ready to forward all of the properties that you want to approve or make a decision is during an open session. You will then make a motion as we did in the twenty nineteen properties. On that zoning map. So you're not necessarily approving this property or adopting this property. You're going to be adopting the map in which this property is reflected because that is the legal map that zoning is determined on. So what we can do is say, yes, you agree with this particular property that you feel it should be I two. We'll make a note of that, that as your provisional recommendation for adoption is yes. And then we'll move through these properties. We don't, we've already met all the legal requirements as far as public hearing, notice all of that stuff. So you can begin to make decisions now, but I believe in Roberta, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the final vote needs to be on the map. In an open session, not the work session. And that's what we will do sometime after you've heard all of the properties or however wish you want to move forward.
Linda, you, I think you read my mind. That's exactly the way I believe we should do it. Except for the fact that it should be a provisional decision, not recommendation. You know, we're, we are now making decisions, so we're, you know, it's one step closer, but absolutely. You know, this is not a, a done deal, but a provisional decision can be made through us during these work sessions and then in open session, we approve it. Okay?
Okay, is that, and that, my, my colleagues are good with that? And I, I, I know you are, Dennis. We just changed the word straw to provisional, that's all. So, so we're, yeah, so we're good there. All right. Well, you know, yeah, okay. So, so let's, let's go right down through these eleven then, Linda, as you have suggested. And then we'll, we'll, we'll do the provisional on each one. Thanks. Clear here, because I, I don't want, I don't want anything to jam up the process now. We've, we've come too far. To have something, to have something derail us at this point. So, okay, thank you.
Oh, absolutely. And I didn't want to make assumptions on how you wanted to proceed for it, so I'm just laying out options. So I appreciate that this is the direction that, that is being moved forward. So then, again, so this is the first property. If you can go to the next slide and then we'll just go back through, starting at the beginning again. The next one was C two, one, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 four. The applicant is Deborah Stockdale, request is R twenty thousand to C two. The property is located on the south side of twenty six, across from the Liberty Exchange in District Five. The acreage is eight acres and it is consistent with the Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan. And both staff and Planning Commission gave this a favorable recommendation.
If I can stop you, if you don't mind. Why don't we just take these one at a time and go through them instead of going through the whole list and then going back from the beginning again? You're gonna say basically the same thing when we come up to them again. So why don't we just start with zero, 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 three? Talk about that one, take our provisional vote and move on to zero, 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 four. Cause I, I just. I, I just think it makes sense and, and I could be wrong. Y'all could say, Fraser, what are you thinking? But I just think that, that's the way to do it.
Okay, I'll say. Yeah, Fraser, what are you thinking? Now, I, I agree. I, I think, I think that's the best way to do it too, Dennis. I assume that's what we were doing here. So let's go back to, everybody good with that?
I think Fraser's Alfie has made him smart today.
Yeah, well, that's a whole nother story. Everybody, everybody good with, with case by case here? Okay, all right. Okay, then we're gonna go back, Linda, to, to zero, 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 three.
Okay. And that is on your screen.
All right. This, this is my district. I met with the owner. I support this proposal.
Okay. Any other comments on zero, 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 three?
Yes, during the, one of the hearings, we had a comment made to change the woods to conservation due to steepness of the slopes. Does that have any merit in this part?
Are you asking Linda or myself having been out there?
Well, I'm just asking anybody here, you know, I know that I've had the comment written down from one of the hearings that. Perhaps this won't be a, a split. Zoning on it where, you know, the, whatever will go to industrial, but the steepness. And forested areas would remain conservation through the stream below it. And that is very steep in that area, isn't it, Eric?
Yeah, it's a very steep drop off that goes down to rarer tracks. Man, that's steep wooded area on the hillside. There's no way anyone could use it for anything, but the rest of the land is already open. And being utilized in some form or fashion by the contractor that owns it. And I don't think it would impact it in any way because it's already being used in some form of commercial use now anyway.
Yeah, when we discussed this, it was mentioned about the woods and steep slope and probably nothing could be done with that. And they're not looking to do anything with that. They're just looking to expand what they have right now on the flatter area. So I don't think there's a danger of those woods or steep slopes being used because right now they're too, too steep.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I'm just reviewing my notes from this one when you share it.
Okay, so. What? Are, are, are we just gonna take a, I mean, I don't, I don't. Correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, if this is a, if this is provisional, then I don't know that we need. The motion in second right now. I think we can just go with, with, with those that are, that are in favor since this is provisional.
To you. Absolutely. We, we can certainly do that and this is just a provisional decision, so does not need to, to be that formal.
Is that?
So how would we vote on it? Does, do we just put thumbs up? I mean, it's provisional. What would be the process or procedure?
Well, I mean, we can do it, we can, we can do it that way. We can do it in the way of what we typically would do. And maybe include the word provisional in, in the, in the, in the motion if you'd like, if you want to keep it. If you want to keep it that direct and then just say, you know, move that we provisionally accept this one. Or something in that manner, and then we can do it that way. If that would make it easier.
I, I move that we take a provisional vote on the Weddiken property.
Okay, there we go. Is there second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Provisional voting here, those in favor of this zero, 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 three. Okay, that was unanimous provisional vote, moving on.
All right. Again, the next one is C two, one, four, twenty, twenty, zero, 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 four. The applicant is Deborah Stockdale. Request is R twenty two, C two. It's eight acres and it is consistent. And both Planning Commission and staff gave this a favorable recommendation.
And I think as a matter of consistency here moving forward too, I would like the commissioner. Whose district these particular properties lie in to take the lead in either reminding us of the property. Or making that provisional motion. If, if that's okay, because I think that gives it a, a better familiarity here. So Commissioner Rothstein, this is five.
Yeah, so this, this property is on the south side of twenty six, across from Liberty Exchange. You have the storage units to the right of it or to the east of it. It's going towards White Rock, going towards ninety seven. It is, it is consistent with the properties to both sides of it. On the corner of White Rock and twenty six, you do have residential. But it, I, I, I think it's, it's bracketed by commercial as is, so it just makes sense that it should. Should move to commercial. It's consistent with, with the plan as well, so.
And we got no comments on this one either, right? I don't have anything written down on this one.
So I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion. That we do a provisional decision on favorable for this piece of property.
Second then.
Eric, Eric, did you have anything else on this one?
Yes, sir. I, I mistakenly thought that was one of the properties in my district and went out and visited and toured the spot. And I'm in one hundred percent agreement with Commissioner Rothstein.
You know, Eric, it's, it's right on the line, I think, between you and I. And honestly, I, I think it's mine, but White Rock is yours on the south side twenty six. So you, you're right. I think it's like within a, a, a property of, of each other, so.
Well, then it makes sense that, that you, you both, you, you motioned in second. Nicely done, gentlemen. Those in favor of zero, 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 four provisionally? Moving on, Linda.
All right, the next property is C two, zero, seven, two, zero, two, zero, 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 five. That's Hale and Helen Stonesifer. The request is R ten thousand to C two. The property is on four, three, eight, East Main Street in Westminster in District Three, so Commissioner Fraser's district. The property is point one, three, eight, one acres. And it is consistent with the Westminster Environs Plan and the two thousand nine Westminster Plan. Both staff and Planning Commission gave this a favorable recommendation.
God, you took everything I was gonna say. It is my district. It's on Main Street. This is where there, there are old houses that are being turned into businesses and commercial uses. And as Linda said, I don't know if you actually said this enough, but City Westminster did make a comment on, but that, that, from what I can gather from talking to people there. In favor of this. Everything, everything seems fine. So I'd make the provisional motion that we accept this change as well.
And I'll, I'll second it. I'm, I'm very familiar with it up there and everything surrounding that property seems to be in the same. The, the same mode. There's businesses up there. So I think this makes sense. So there's my second. Any other on this one? In favor? Okay, moving on, Linda. That was unanimous.
All right, skipping ahead now to C two, zero, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 one, zero. The applicant is SMO Incorporated. The request is R forty thousand to C two. The location is Maryland one forty at Suffolk Road. It is in District Two, Commissioner Weaver's district. And again, this property is less than one acre in size. It is consistent with goal fifteen of the Carroll County Master Plan. And both staff and Planning Commission gave this a favorable recommendation. This is already part of that Jiffy Mart gas station, so this would just be an extension of that parcel. If you recall, this property was sold and re-subdivided by Tevis in twenty eighteen, I believe. So that is why they're coming forward now with this rezoning request is to, to make everything consistent with the Jiffy Mart property.
Yeah, is this zoning make sense here? All of a sudden, it's out of order in my book here. I don't know where. Yeah, there it is. Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking, I, I didn't have any unfavorable comments on it. And looking at the property and knowing where the property is, this makes sense and I will move that we provide provisional acceptance of this. Rezoning.
Hey, Commissioner Weaver, the only thing that I got. I had mentioned in one of, I think it was in the listening session, not the public hearing. But I had questioned the availability of that business. To be able to expand because I, you guys, if you've seen these bigger rudders and rural farms. You know, they, they have their, their, their fuel islands quite a distance away from their existing. Shops or, or storefronts or whatever. And I, I, I merely asked the question as to whether this could occur because there is a house that sits right there behind, if that would ever occur. But I think the answer was there was no intent to ever do that, and I think the way that property sits, I don't think they could do it anyway, could they, Dick?
No, no, this is a very, it could maybe expand that to parking or something, but not what you're alluding to as far as the fuel islands. It's, if I remember right, I think this falls down into a conservation area where they have to have some drainage in there. So that's why I made the motion. This is, I think, a moot point on this one.
Okay. All right, I'll second it then. All right, any others on this one? Moving, oh, sorry, all in favor? The unanimous moving forward, Linda.
Just to clarify too, I don't believe they can because there's a water recharge easement to part of that property. So they really could not expand much onto that additional piece, and I believe that's in your staff report, just to clarify.
Yeah, it is. I just wanted to bring up because a lot of these are no comments, but we did, because I brought it up, we did get a comment on that and it was, it was clarified. And that's the only reason I brought it up. Thanks.
Absolutely. So again, this next property is adjacent to it. This is the oh, oh, one, one. Tevis Real Estate Incorporated. The request is R forty to C two, and it is in District Two. This is fifty nine hundred square feet, so very small parcel and it houses a billboard on the property. Both staff and Planning Commission gave this a favorable recommendation.
This is yours, Dick.
A question. All this property from the Jiffy Mart all the way across, is that all?
It was all Tevis property. He sold to SMO, Southern Maryland Oil several years ago. And then re-subdivided the parcel to take his portion off, which is the billboard, which is the one that you're seeing now. So that's why these parcels have these on configurations is because of that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, th- these parcels all have some major limitations with them. I mean, there'd be some development, but it's not gonna be anything. It's sort of like oh, oh, ten there. It's not gonna be a major change to this. It's sort of like oh oh ten there. It's not going to be a major change to this. And I I didn't even make any comments as far as the what we have to change on this. I think the billboard sets in there and that's about it. So I'm not a move that we pass this provisionally.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, Linda, moving forward. That was unanimous.
Okay, the next property, C two zero six two zero two zero 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 one five. The applicant is Mary Jane Grant. Request is Ag to C two. This property is located in your District Commissioner Wance on forty thirty three Limeboro Road, just outside of Manchester in the Limeboro Rural Village. And the property is eight point oh nine acres, and it is consistent with the implementation strategy for rural villages as outlined in the Carroll County Master Plan. Both staff and Planning Commission gave this a favorable recommendation.
Yeah, so this one's mine, and I'm going to make Clark Schaefer fall off his chair right now because he's probably listening. I am against this one hundred percent. Okay, now that Clark Schaefer's back on his chair, I think this makes sense. This this one, this one, this is long overdue. There has been mixed use on this property. And Dick, you also are very familiar with this property. You and I both have been through this process here. And this is just a very sensible decision here to allow for these folks to be able to operate in in the best manner that they can, consistent with what they've been doing for many years.
And so it should be in my district.
Are you liable for Clark's heart attack?
Yeah, so that was my provisional motion, and I think Commissioner Weaver just seconded it, so. All right, any other questions on this one? All right, all those in favor? That's unanimous moving forward as well. And my apologies to Mr. Schaefer. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Schaefer me? I was, I didn't see that coming. So the next property, C three oh seven twenty twenty zero zero one seven. This is eight four four Professional Center. The request is R ten thousand to C two. They had requested C three, but then changed it to C two in the alternative. The property is eight four four Washington Road in Commissioner Frazier's district. It is four point nine acres. It is consistent with the visions in the Westminster Plan. Staff gave it a favorable recommendation for C two. Planning Commission gave it a favorable recommendation for C two.
Yeah, this is already, like Linda said, built out. There's professional buildings there, doctor's offices, that kind of thing. And with parking, it just makes sense to to zone it as such.
Is that a?
I'll second that.
I'll I'll make the provisional motion that we zone it to C two, and we've already seconded, so it's good.
Weaver seconded again, just to make it official.
Officially, I second Commissioner Frazier's motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Weaver. All right, yeah, this one makes sense as well. All those in favor? All right, moving forward, Linda, that was unanimous.
Okay, skipping way ahead now. So as you can see, between seventeen and thirty one, we're going to have some discussions. So property thirty one, C two oh five twenty twenty zero zero three one is Buckman Associates LLC. The request is R ten thousand to C two. It is located at eleven thirty five Liberty Road in Commissioner Rothstein's district. The property is point three nine acres. And it is consistent with the future land use and goals one to enforce the Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan. Both staff and Planning Commission gave this a favorable recommendation. And most recently, I forwarded a positive comment to you regarding this property.
Yeah, again, this is pretty much a no brainer. It's on the corner of thirty two twenty six, just a bit westbound of Princess Shopping Center. And it conforms to the master plan and ties neatly in to the surrounding parcels. So with that, I will make a provisional recommendation that we approve this piece of property as listed.
That was a second from Eric. Thank you. Okay, any other questions on this one? In favor? Moving forward, that's unanimous. Keep going, Linda.
The next property is C two oh five twenty twenty zero zero three two. The applicant, and I just love to say his name is Onofrio Semino, trustee. Request is R ten to C two. There are three parcels that make up this request, eleven oh seven, eleven twenty three, and eleven twenty nine Liberty Road. It is in, again, Commissioner Rothstein's district. The acreage of all three properties makes up one point oh seven acres. And it is consistent with both the land use and the goals in the Freedom Plan. Both staff and Planning Commission gave this a favorable recommendation.
Same comments as the previous piece of property, so therefore I will make the motion for provisional decision or provisional recommendation when we move forward on this piece of property as listed.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of double oh thirty two? And that's unanimous, Linda, moving forward.
Okay, so the next two properties that have an unfavorable recommendation by Planning Commission and staff, and they are not consistent with the plan for the area. There were no comments on either of these requests, positive or negative. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So these are a little more challenging. You may want to have a little more discussion if you agree with an unfavorable recommendation to not rezone these properties. So the first one is C two oh seven two zero two zero 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 two zero. The applicant is Boke Four LLC. The request is Ag to C two. The location is seventy five Lamb Drive in Westminster. It is in Commissioner Frazier's district, and it is ten point two acres. This property's request is not consistent with the future land use of the Carroll County Master Plan, more goals fourteen and fifteen of the plan. This property was the former site of the North Carroll Community School and was a church at one point in time. All of the current and past uses were primary principal uses in the Ag Zone. So nothing was nonconforming on this property. Both staff and Planning Commission gave this an unfavorable recommendation.
Well, I thought of the conversation since it's in my district. I personally am not in favor of rezoning this. I I know where the property is. It's it's kind of just outside the Westminster. I can't remember what it's called, Primary Development Area or whatever, something like that, Linda. Right outside there. It's a, it was a church. It was turned into the school. I believe it's a church again. It can still be a church in the zoning that's on right now. So I don't really understand why they want to change the zoning there because they can still use it for what it's being used for right now without changing anything. So I'm in favor of keeping it the way that it is.
Yeah, so I'm I'm very familiar with this too. I pass it fourteen times a day. And you're right, Dennis, it 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 was a church and then a school, and now it's back to a church. The the problem is, for me, on this one, there's no planned service, either water or sewage, out to this facility at all. And it is outside of the DGA of Westminster, so I'm not sure why they would want to rezone it. They'd have to do their own thing out there, and I don't think that they would. I can't imagine them having to do that with anything other than what it is now, which is, you know, a minimal size or a medium sized church, I guess. So I I agree. I don't think this is consistent with with what we're trying to do here. So that's my two cents, Dennis, to tap onto yours.
I agree with you, Dennis. This is just outside the area. No sewer and water planned. Maybe ten, fifteen years from now, twenty, but not at present time.
So.
I was gonna say, I'll make the most a straw vote with this is given unfavorable recommendation.
Yeah, I'll second it. All right, all those in favor on that one? Unfavorable on this particular property, which is twenty twenty zero zero twenty two. All right, that was unanimous. Linda, next one.
All right, so the last property for discussion today is C one zero three two zero two zero 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 two seven. The applicant is North Carroll Community School. The request is Ag to C one. The property is located at four oh one Stone Road in District One. So this is your District Commissioner Wance. The acreage is twelve point seven acres. This is not consistent with the future land use or the goals in the Carroll County Master Plan. Both staff and Planning Commission forwarded an unfavorable recommendation for this property. Again, this is a primary principal use allowed in the zoning district that they're in. This is not a nonconforming use. So this is something that, again, is primary principle for this property.
And I guess that would be my only reason for saying no to this is it's inconsistent with with the usage out there. Listen, I'm going to be clear. I can't imagine them ever doing anything else with this property other than what it is. They've spent a lot of money on the school building. It's brand new. Well, it's about, I say brand new, it's probably two, three years old at this point. They've improved the property with a couple athletic fields. And, you know, they they're, they've they've really invested in that piece of property. So the only reason I would say no to this, I guess, is because it is inconsistent. I mean, I've argued before that we should call it what it is. It's a school, and that's what it is. But if it's inconsistent with the use, I guess that's where we should go with this. I guess you get a sense I'm a little torn on this one because it's clearly being used for what it is. I know it's approved in that one in Ag. So that's my.
Schools are appropriate in what properties currently? Just Ag or other parcels, other zoning? Linda?
Mary, can you chime in on that, please? You have the code with you. Thank you. Where's my code checker today? Mary, you're still muted. I think it's on your gear wheel.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, they're permitted in all three commercial districts, not the industrial district. And let me just check on the residential. I'm not sure. I believe they are in all the residential, but let me be sure about that.
And obviously it is permitted in Ag because that's how they were.
Okay, now, I mean.
As well as all the residential, sorry.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Any answer to the question that the school would still be conforming if it was rezoned into C one? But I'm not sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's the, that that was the only question I had. You were kind of getting there. I mean, I think they put it the request in because they probably want to be called what they are. Really, but but clearly, it it, this is not consistent with the the master plan on on a couple items. So I I think for that for that for that part of this discussion, I think it, we should let it alone. We didn't hear, they just put in, and we really didn't hear anything else from them, right, Linda, that I can recall?
That is correct. We did not hear anything from them. And just so you know too, that this property was developed after the adoption of the plan. Is consistent, that the current development, everything is consistent with the master plan as well as in conformance with the current zoning.
Okay, okay. Well, I get a sense that if they were so strongly in favor of this, they would have been a little bit more more vocal about this. So based upon the decision that was made by both our planning and our planning and zoning folks, our planning department of planning and zoning folks, I'll go ahead and provisionally say that we should leave this where it is and give it unfavorable.
I'm seconding that.
All right, any other discussion on this one? All in favor? Eric? Is that a, is that a?
I'll abstain on this one. I'm a little bit torn on it.
Okay. All right, so that's four and one abstention provisionally. So, okay. All right, Linda?
All right, so we're well ahead of schedule for this morning. We don't have any other materials prepared for you. I think this is a good starting place for us to 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 know how you would like to proceed forward with these. So we have seventeen more requests to go through. And how, again, we're going to be moving forward, those are the remaining properties in order of complexity. So basically, recommendations, maybe there's a conflict between staff and Planning Commission recommendation as far as consistency goes, consistency with the plans and comments received. So again, these were kind of the low hanging fruit, some of the easier decisions to make as we move forward. The next seventeen will progressively get more challenging. Therefore, we have two work sessions scheduled after the first of the year. The first one is January fifth, and the next one is January fourteenth. And again, we're blocking off two hour blocks. We may go that whole time, we may not. It's hard to know what the timing will be moving forward. But again, prior to each meeting, I'll send you the presentation of properties that we will be discussing with you as well as the remaining comments that we've received up until the public hearing, which is when the record closed. There any questions, comments? If you like this process, if you've got any suggestions for the next two meetings, I'm happy to hear them. We're kind of moving at your pace and, you know, kind of how we move along with this whole process.
Hey, Linda, like I said, I I liked the way it's working because I suggested it, but no, I do like the way it's working very well. I do have a question. If you could check on the property, because since we got the booklet and the favorables and all that other stuff, the property on thirty one, the Finch property, sent a different diagram of what they want to do with the property. Can you check to see that because of the new configuration and so forth, would that come out as a favorable recommendation from either planning, zoning, or staff, or still unfavorable? Because I'd like to have that information before we look at that particular property. And I also like to make one other comment. It's brought up because of Commissioner Boucher, but I don't think we should abstain on these on these things. These are very important. We need to make decisions, make provisional votes. We can abstain, but once we get to the actual vote, we've got to vote on this. That's what we're here for. Unless you have a conflict of interest that you know the owner personally, or you have money into it, and says I don't have any money at all, I don't have any money in anything. But, you know, that's something like that, then we have to vote on it. And that's just the way I feel about it. You could say, Commissioner Fraser, you're wrong, but I just feel that's what we're here for, is to vote on these properties.
Commissioner Fraser, I appreciate that. It's just that I really want to delve deeper into a little bit of the legal aspect. And since it is a provisional vote, I want to hold back until I get some more clarity because I'm I'm very much concerned about the legalities of all this. And once it does come up, I will definitely vote up or down on these properties. But since it is provisional, I just want to hold back and and do a little bit more research on it. Thank you.
And and I appreciate that. And thank you for your explanation.
The the other piece about the Finch property, Linda, is if they made a change in their recommendation or in their, you know, what they want to achieve out of that Finch property to ensure that the community was aware of those changes appropriately and had the appropriate opportunity to comment and that we gather those comments. You know, that that's that's going to be important because what I don't want is for them to skip that process by making changes, you know, midstream. We we got it. This is a great process. You know, I've applauded you and your team, along with the Planning Commission, in getting us where we are today. I think, you know, and I I think we can still have some conversation. I mean, we did block it off for a couple hours. I don't know if there's a feel for that, if people want to. we did block it off for a couple hours. I don't know if there's a a feel for that, if people want to. There are pieces of property that, you know, we can have conversations on. Uh, this is a work session. So i- if if you're open for it, my colleagues, good. If not, then I guess we can wait till January fifth. Uh, if we could do it before, that'd be great. There's that, there's just a lot of interest going on right now. And the more we can put people at ease, one way or the other, I think the better the community is going to be. So that's my two cents.
Uh, Linda, are you ready to perceive any of your properties? And I'm gonna quote Commissioner Rothstein for a second. I hate to do that, but we're here for a task out of time. But if ready to, if you're not ready to move forward, then I would say I'd hold off. If you're ready to move forward, it it's, in my opinion.
Um, I mean, we can put something together on screen from our website. I don't have anything else to present to you other than what we've already shown for you today. So if you all want to move forward, I mean, we're certainly happy to do that. I would suggest that then we would pick up um with our next property, which is zero zero one for mad properties, and I can pull that up onto the screen.
You're not talking about now. You're talk, you're you're talking about soon, right? Not right now, Dennis, right? Were you talking about now?
Uh, no, I Ed was. I was not. I was talking about, I I'd like to have the the same procedure all we did today with Linda, have everything ready for us. At like, you know, we got the stuff beforehand and that kind of stuff, what property she were gonna talk about. That's what I said. That's why I said we're here for a task, not a time. But you know, if you want to move it before the the fifth, I don't know, that'd be possible because of the, you know, breaking off up there.
It was a tiny issue. We could not get anything on the schedule.
But but the thing is, we we do have, we do have our books. We've been looking at this for, because now I've obviously been looking at this a whole lot more because of the the other work sessions, but uh I feel like we are, as a team, of commissioners, prepared to have these conversations. If if we're not, that's that's fine, and we can wait. Um I understand the scheduling challenges. I don't know if uh the twenty-ninth of December is doable. Uh, it would give us a week prior um in moving forward. I don't want to be such a a taskmaster, but you know, it's it's difficult, and and holiday season, it's very difficult to get things scheduled, I know, but um we have a lot on our plate, and I would like us to get as much done as possible before we start walking into the budget season. And I know we can do two things at once, but there's a lot on our plate. So that's what I was thinking through.
So there's, there's, there's two Tuesdays yet that we don't really have anything scheduled. Uh, but I don't know how your schedule is, Linda. I've got two Tuesdays in December, the fifteenth and the twenty-second.
Fifteenth is commissioned, but we can do um in the afternoon.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that, I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't have, I don't have that on here. Sorry.
So do the afternoon of the fifteenth, um, and we can do the afternoon of the twenty-second is fine with with my schedule, obviously, and I'll do whatever you all need us to do.
Is it possible to move the uh Planning and Zoning Commission um to eleven o'clock as opposed to nine?
So the agenda's already been set and sent out, and we do have development review projects on the table.
Yep, that's fair.
Gentlemen, on the fifteenth and the twenty-second.
I think it's a great idea.
I I mean, I I I'm not gonna say I don't agree with with Dennis and Ed, because I typically do agree with Dennis and Ed, so uh on some things. Uh, but I think sooner rather than later here, and the more we push this, uh, I think it gets a little bit stale. You know what I mean? We we just came off a a listening session, we just came off a public hearing. We've got the, we've got the the comments. With the exception of reaching out to one more, I'm, of course, I I only had like three, so, and two I've never done. But um, but I with the, and I've got to reach out to one more person on one of mine yet, but I'm ready to roll on these things, I think. I just think the more that we.
The morning of the fifteenth possible?
Say that again, Dick.
Is the morning of the fifteenth possible?
But Linda and I are tied up in a planning uh commission, which the agenda's already been pushed out, so that's where we're not available. So we could do the afternoon. You know, I I do know we have the Veterans Commission, but we could miss that, or, you know, take take a breather to talk, you know, give some comments, but um, I I just think that, again, we have momentum with a lot of uh interest in what's going on, and like you said, it's fresh in our minds. So that's why I would like to keep this conversation going.
For the fifteenth and the and the, was it twenty-second? See, we get them done then. I mean, why not? We could get through the whole thing before Christmas. Especially if it goes as smoothly as it did this morning, which I'm not really expecting, but it'd be very nice to ha- have that happen.
Yeah, and then maybe have that January fifth, is that the one you've got on there as the wrap-up and the 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 vote for the entire thing, maybe? I don't know. Instead of, we can provisionally do the fifteenth and leave it, leave it provisionally the twenty-second. Sit on it and then still have that last January fifth to make any final and do the final vote. That would be my suggestion. I don't want you guys to miss the the um the VAC meeting. I mean, you guys okay with missing that VAC meeting or not? You and Dick, you and Ed?
I think we can get our comments to Gina um and to uh to Mark Prior. Um, Dick, I mean, that, I don't want to speak for you, but I feel like taking care of the water on this.
Yeah, we can, uh, I I don't think there's anything earth-shattering going on, right? It's present time that we can get comments to them and uh build from there, so I um, yeah, I I I think, you know, this would take uh precedent over any other meetings.
I think the big discussion during the VAC honestly would, is going to be um the Rees Across America scheduling on the nineteenth, and because this will be the fifteenth. So I think people are gonna give you up where they're gonna be going. And if we can, as a group, prepare where we're gonna be going and share that with Gina and the team over there and Mark, that that would be helpful, so. And, yeah, besides that, I think we we'd be good.
Okay. Okay, so you guys, you with knowing how planning rolls, planning's at nine AM on the fifteenth, right? Does that typically roll past noon or one o'clock?
This is a very late agenda, so we 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 should be done very latest eleven, I would think.
Okay, so the only reason I'm asking, one to three? Or for Ed and I, thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred?
The board of Ed, so they shouldn't run all day.
So we want to do the fifteenth and the twenty-second from one P to three P? Is that good? Okay. Linda, you all right with that?
Yes, sir. Perfect.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I I just want to real quickly state that I appreciate both Commissioner Frazier and Rothstein's heightened interest in reviewing the Finch property. Even though it's my district, it's very complicated, and I'm gonna need all of our brains to work very hard on this to to make a rational decision. So thanks for your extra interest in this property.
Okay, uh, county administrator, do you have anything?
With regard to the Finch property, um, the the applicant, as you know, uh, through their attorney during the public hearing, um, made a an alternate suggestion for their um request, to their request. Keep in mind, the Board of Commissioners can not only approve or deny what the, any applicant has requested, but you can also modify. Um, so to Commissioner Rothstein's point, if the the clear, keep in mind that the hearing and the record are closed, so we're not authorized to accept any additional comments at this time. And I understand if the board wants to have the opportunity for the public around the Finch property who um who have commented or who would be commenting, want to do that and and react react to the most recent suggestion, then the board may want to consider, and we can talk about this next time or the time after, may want to consider opening a public hearing for that purpose. Does that make sense? Because you can't take public comment on it as it stands at the moment. But if you want to give the public an opportunity to react to the newest suggestion, then it would be my recommendation that we open the, open a public hearing for that purpose.
Or we could pass judgment on the original request.
Right, you can do that anyway. You could do that anyway, regardless. You can, you can decide for yourself that these are at, you're approved as requested, they're denied as requested, or anything in between. Okay, so if somebody asks for this and you want to give them something else, you can, without a public, additional public hearing. And um, so um, but if you have an interest in having the public react, and you seem to indicate that, Commissioner Rothstein, so maybe I misunderstood you. But if you have an interest in having the public react to the latest suggestion or um request of the applicant, then you'd have to open the public hearing in order to do that. That's all.
Right, and and my my comment or my thoughts are, if we are to take into consideration the uh newest request, then I think the fair um and expectation should be that the community has the opportunity to comment. Uh, if we, as a board, are to take that up, if we're not to take that up um and look at the original request, we've got every comment already made, and we can deliberate and then judge, so.
Right, that's totally up to you. It's just if you want to take new comments, then you need new here. That's all.
Which leads to an interesting, interesting uh way in which to do this, because quite frankly, I've already gotten three emails as a, as it, as it pertains to the the newest proposal for that property. So I guess in essence, what you're saying is I'm not supposed to read them. Problem is, I already did.
It's stickier in modern, it gets stickier, this kind of thing does get stickier in this kind of modern um comm- world of communication. I mean, people can pick up the phone and call you, people can, you know, reach out to you, they can see where if you store. It it's it's a little bit more complicated, but the official record is closed and and.
Yeah, and and I I think we all received the same phone calls and emails um because they're concerned, you know, community uh and neighbors, and, you know, it's one of those, we listen. We're not gonna share with them to see what we're gonna do, because we don't know what we're gonna do, you know, until we get together. But as a, to me, if we're going to consider the new uh recommendations or the new requests, then it would be fair for the community at large to have the opportunity to come back to us with their comments openly to all of us. So it's, we're all on the same sheet of music. But again, that's something that we have to decide whether we're gonna do that or not.
Right.
Yeah, we'll take that, we'll take that discussion up when the property comes up, either the fifteenth or the twenty-second, and then we can move forward then. There's nothing to say that we can't put that property aside, right? In order to have an additional hearing just on that particular parcel. So, but but that discussion, I think, needs to be had when we bring that property up for all of us to weigh in on it, so. Okay.
Just wanted to put that in your, in your brains since, especially since Commissioner Rothstein mentioned it.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
To me or to Commissioner Rothstein?
You and him both. Look, now he wants to adjourn real quick. Imagine that. Okay, all right, anything else? Anything else? All right, uh, we'll be back on the air Thursday morning at oh nine hundred hours. Remind everyone to stay safe, and we'll talk then. We have a motion to adjourn this work session. Is there a second?
Second.
Took a while, okay. All right, everybody have a good day. We'll see you Thursday morning. All those in favor? And we are out.